Is there a motion to accept? I don't know who was first on that. Okay, second. All in favor? Hi, Dr. Harrison, over to you.
Good evening, everyone, and it's great to see you all in person again this evening. I cannot start this meeting without talking about the level of excitement and enthusiasm that is rippling across our school district. We continue to use that phrase "all in Irvington," which I admittedly lifted from Dr. Cantor. That is our effort. We are all into this initiative. We are all collaborating to make it work, and we saw a successful increase of student attendance at Dow's Lane just yesterday. It was an incredible team effort. I can tell you as I walked the halls of the building yesterday and today, to see our students' excitement, to see their joy, to see their engagement with their peers, was exceptional. In many cases, when I entered classrooms, I asked students, I said, "How are you doing today? How does it feel to be back in school?" And the responses that I got, and I asked them, "Show me with their thumbs." A lot were thumbs up, and then I had a bunch of students that stood up and said, "Dr. Harrison, two thumbs up." And the kids were thrilled. Teachers are thrilled. It has been really smooth. The concerns that we've had around managing traffic at Dow's Lane are real, but manageable. We've been in a position the last two days where parents have been very patient and cooperative, and for that, I thank you. But the Dow's team has done a super job in managing traffic flow. Thanks to the Irvington Police Department for their support in helping manage the traffic as well. We're thrilled to look forward to those next two steps as we move all in as a district and looking at the 7th of April, Main Street School coming back, and then on the 12th, the middle school and high school. We're going to be ready, and we are just thrilled to see our students back full time. That said, we are putting the finishing touches on our surveillance testing program, and information should come out by the end of the week. But I need parent support. If we remember back to the last meeting, I had that one slide where it's really calling for community support. I'm going to ask parents to please go back and revisit communications that I sent. There'll be another one that'll come out this week seeking parents to sign their children up to participate in the surveillance testing program. Again, it's going to be a real non-invasive process. We're looking for a drive-through testing process with a lower nasal swab, and you'll have results in 15 minutes. So please, look to collaborate if you're comfortable doing so. Have your children participate, and as we look over the course of the year, we're really thinking that if we get enough people signing up, as we expect, each child will have to participate approximately one time. So please, if you could really step back and remember to do that, that would be greatly appreciated. Complete that consent. At this point in time, we have about 400 students signed up, and I would love to see that clear 1,000. So please, if you've done it, thank you. If you have yet to, please take the minute to do so. It's a brief, brief Google form for you to complete. At the last meeting, we also talked about some anticipated updates to the state's travel requirements. I just want to iterate that New York State still has not made any shifts in the guidance for schools to follow. We are waiting for something, hopefully to come down from Albany later this week. If not, I will communicate some updates in the newsletter on Saturday, looking at some shifts that we will explore, trying to make it easier for families. So rather than requiring a PCR test related to travel, we will require a rapid test, and we will only do so in the event that the state doesn't waive the April travel requirements following April 1st. So we're waiting for the state health department to give direction. If that doesn't happen, we're going to revise our protocols to try to make it a little friendlier and easier for our community members. So please look to my newsletter on Saturday for some additional details on that front. Also, I want to thank parents that are remembering to complete the daily health screener. We're still having some challenges. One example that at Dow's Lane yesterday, I know we had approximately 30 students who did not have it completed, and that really consumes hours of our nursing staff and office staff to track families down, to make sure that it's completed. So we are sending out multiple reminders. You get an automated one from the system. You'll get a text message and an email from me every morning at 6:45 so that I ask that you please do that for us because it's necessary to ensure that we can operate our school safely and that we can allow our expert nurses to be available to care for the health of our students and our support staff to be involved in supporting the operations of the school rather than making phone calls when these obligations were not fulfilled. So your support on that front is appreciated. I do want to make one note related to this year's school calendar, the 2021 school calendar. As you will recall from past years, we had the beloved PLRDs on Wednesdays, professional learning release days. At this time, you know, up until this time, there hadn't been any issues with them and/or there hadn't been impacts because they really aligned by design with our hybrid schedule. However, now that we're moving into full attendance, we still have two remaining PLRDs on the calendar, April 14th and May 19th. In the newsletter on Saturday, I will communicate that we will not be having the April 14th PLRD because we need to establish routines and consistency in our schools. And what we're going to be looking to, though, on May 19th to have that PLRD because there's so much happening in our schools that teachers are going to need that extra time for collaboration and planning with all that is changing around them. But please trust that I'll continue to evaluate that as we move forward over the next month and a half. And there will be a communication related to that in this weekend's newsletter. And then finally, spring break is just around the corner, and I think it's really something that we have all earned. There has been incredible work happening across the district. Amazing perseverance from our students and dedication of our incredible faculty, staff, and administration and the support and flexibility of our parent community. As we looked into heading to next week, I hope everybody has that opportunity to really relax, have a healthy break, and for those of you that are celebrating holidays, I do hope you enjoy.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So we have now our first community comment here at the evening. So if there's any community members that wish to make a comment, now's the time to do so. You can put your name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom. So give everyone a brief minute for that.
Brian, I had a quick question about one of the updates I'd like to ask.
Sure.
Just with, I'm glad to hear, Chris, that Dow's Lane pickup drop-off has been manageable. Have you had to use the exit towards Fish and Road or no?
No, we have not. No, we have not. In the two days, we've managed all with traffic coming in and out of Dow's Lane only. You know, we do have the staggered arrival times with buses arriving, parents not allowed to enter campus until 7:50, and the Irvington Police have been supporting us in that effort, and parents have been really cooperative, and I can tell you that we had, while the majority of our students are either walking or being transported by their parents, we had all the children in the building today by 8:05, which really speaks to everyone's collaboration. It's wonderful.
It's great to hear.
Dr. Harrison, back over to you and Ms. Stein for, I presume, for the budget discussion.
Absolutely. So over recent months, we've seen the evolution of our budget process, and in doing so, we recognize that it's been a challenging one, one where we've had to demonstrate our own flexibility and thinking in our approach to the management of our finances. But as we always do in Irvington, we continue to be focused on our vision. We always want to make sure that we're taking the steps necessary to ensure we're providing those high-quality experiences for our students, that we're supporting our staff, that we're maintaining outstanding learning facilities. But we always keep an eye on the fiscal health of the district and the financial impact packed on our community members as it relates to the district budget. In doing so, we're always grounding our work in the six strategic objectives that really underpin all that we do throughout this process, like we do in all other processes in the school district. We've really connected all of our work, our initiatives, to these six objectives, which really keep us focused each and every day. So as we've gone through this process, that alignment has been there, and when we face these challenges, we always test ourselves. We always think about that which we are doing to make sure we're being true to that vision that we have for the school district. So throughout this process, which you can see we're in the midst of, we've held ourselves accountable to that. We've held ourselves accountable to not only being responsible in the decisions that we're making and making sure that we're providing the high-quality experiences our children deserve, continuing to support our faculty, staff, and administration, but keeping that eye on the budget and its impact on our school community. So we've gone through two comprehensive budget discussions publicly. One focused on all the components of the business and operations side of the budget. So we think of so many of the things that really don't directly impact kids. It's the things that sit behind the scene, and you see a list of many of the categories before you, but all of these certainly play a critical role in the education of our children. And then most recently, two weeks ago, we stopped and we really focused on curriculum and instruction and all those things that are truly student-facing and thinking about teachers and all the experiences that really come to our children in our schools each and every day. So when we're thinking about the development of this budget, whether it is the operations side or if it is the curriculum instruction side, there's year-to-year budget variances that inevitably occur. So before we even contemplate any single new initiative, there's changes that occur, increases in expenditures that are going to be before us. Those are some of the most obvious, are related to negotiated salaries, costs related to students with disabilities, support for John Cardinal O'Connor School as we have a legal obligation, our continued commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and our partnership with NYU and evolving our work, social emotional learning, and the work with Castle. I continue to see those areas as non-negotiables because it's an ethical commitment that we have in our school community. We've had some shifts and changes in added district placements and tuitions. We've had some students that have returned to schools. We have some students that have moved out of the communities and tuitions that have increased. We have technology needs and other equipment needs that surface from year to year that we have to address and other costs such as BOSIs, where there's increases in cost of service, and then benefit changes and thinking about what happens for the the state-issued rates for the teacher retirement system, the employee retirement system, and seeing those increases and having to accept those impacts. Looking at our health insurance increases for all of our employees. And here, where we're seeing a rate of 4.85%, we need to remind the community that this is a rate, once again, that's far below the national average and a rate that is achieved by the responsible management of school districts in this region that are insured through its own cooperative effort. So in this budget process, on February 9th, we talked about the operations and finance side of the budget. Looking at that push-ahead budget, reviewed those specific variances by dollar and percentage. We looked at our actual costs of the budget, and then we discussed considerations, items that we see as absolutely necessary. Then on the 9th of March, we did the same for curriculum and instruction, and we recognize that this year is not a year to make lots of changes. You know, we always talk about the level of ambition that we have in the Irvington schools because we always want more and we want better. We want to be innovative. We want to provide top-quality programs for our students every single day. But this was a year where we had to focus on sustaining the quality programs that we have and keeping those programs and the overall district operating at its maximum level. So when we did that, there are a handful of considerations that the administration presented to the board. But in doing so, we had a deficit of just over $400,000. So after the meeting on the 9th, we stepped back and we took a look at those needs and considerations. We considered the feedback that was presented to us. We incorporated some new information, and then we made changes to those proposals. To balance a budget, which is our responsibility and mine in presenting to you this evening, we made adjustments to make sure that we have a budget that's tax cap compliant and is still aligned with our strategic objectives. We understand that's still quite a bit of uncertainty out there. We're not sure all that's going to happen with the state aid revenue as the governor and our legislative bodies are still continuing to negotiate. We also need to understand what's going to happen as it relates to federal aid that is coming our way. Currently, there's information available that indicates that Irvington will receive just over $500,000. But what hasn't been communicated is the timing of when those funds are going to be released, if the funds are going to be released directly to a school district, or if they're going to be passed through the state government, which I'm going to say admittedly makes me anxious because we think back to prior examples of stimulus monies during this pandemic, and the funds from the federal government are intended to, and then the legislation states that they should not supplant other funding, but New York State, in fact, did that. New York State made a cut to the Irvington Schools of $68,000 in aid, which was an equal part, the exact funding that we received from the federal government. So if you ask me, that was supplanting monies that were due to the school district. Our hope is that we're not going to see that moving forward, that we're truly going to see those $500,000 enter the district as a revenue. But we know that there is going to be some guidelines, some rails that we're going to have to stay between, and some of them are going to direct us to look at addressing the COVID gap, thinking about learning loss that may have occurred within the pandemic and direct approximately 20% of those funds directly into those efforts, which I have to tell you, I'm really excited about that, and I think about the opportunities for collaboration and shared services among local school districts and providing some high-quality programming for students that would be in need, that would meet certain parameters that we would define. However, what remains unclear is what happens potentially with the other $400,000, what restrictions may be on the spending of it, whether we have to spend that money over one year or two years. Because in the actual bill itself, it speaks about educational impact and over the next two years. So we have to be mindful of that. I would suspect, like other federal grants, that there's going to be an application process where we're going to have to meet standards. We're going to have to make a proposal that is then going to be reviewed on the state level before we'd be able to get access to those funds. So we certainly anticipate seeing some modest increases in our revenue, but there's a real question mark as to what that will look like, what strings may be attached to it, and when those monies will be received. So we know that state aid's not going to be finalized for another couple of weeks. So when that, those negotiations or negotiations wrap up in Albany, we'll have a clearer picture of what's going to happen there. We are going to continue to review new considerations. Here, we know that we've had to make some adjustments. We had to do so to be able to make changes to have a balanced budget. In doing so, we also reviewed our push-ahead needs to see where we could scale back some of those projections that we think about where we could possibly fund or pay for some of those initiatives this school year. And then in the areas where we're proposing to make adjustments or cuts to the two prior proposals that we put forth, I want to approach this like we did with the 2021 budget. If we find ourselves in a position where we do have increased revenues, where the fiscal outlook is healthier than the conservative responsible view that we're taking on it this year, that we can have those conversations about restoring some of those items as we move forward. So what do these adjustments look like? Well, we're added a modest increase in sales tax, $15,000, and that's looking at an analysis of actual tax receipts, you know, sales tax receipts through our county, and we believe that we're going to easily see that spending continues to be high in Westchester County. So we're thinking we're going to have healthy sales tax revenues. When we think about charges for services, so here, consider the rental of our facilities. With your opening up, we're going to now have opportunities. We're going to have more to be able to. Somebody's mic is live on their computer. Pat, can you just please touch base with Martini? So we believe that we're going to see more revenue through the rental of our facilities, and that's already beginning to open up as we're starting to consider spring sports and thinking how we're going to be able to rent our facilities to local sports groups. So when we think of some of these other changes to new considerations, some of this has been really evolutionary, and looking at the work that we're doing today, Irvington's going to be all in. We're one of the leaders in the region in returning our students to full daily attendance. But that required us to make moves now, moves that we were initially looking at for September. So we're seeing, right now, we purchased our desk dividers. Those desk dividers have already arrived for the elementary schools. Those for the secondary schools will be here any day, and I will come back to touch on desk dividers momentarily. In looking at our surveillance testing program that we've set up, the state has delivered, and I thank the Department of Health because sitting in my office, as I referenced at the last meeting, I have cases of COVID rapid tests. We're continuing to get the tests for free, and, and as I shared, that we are in a position where we will be able to support our testing needs for this year. So we're not seeing a cost in having to purchase tests next year. But what, where we will have an expenditure, should we be in a position where we're still committed to surveillance testing, is the actual test administration, where we are contracting with outside health professionals that are going to come in to facilitate that testing for us to ensure that our nurses are available to support school operations and care for our children on a daily basis. Looking at a facilities truck, you know, we've talked about it year over year. It's a purchase that we have to make. And when we look at our finances this year, we believe and we remain confident that we're going to be able to make that purchase in the 2021 fiscal year. And in doing so, we'll be able to eliminate that expenditure from the 2122 budget. So when we think of the desk dividers, and I do want to correct one statement that I made, that all of the dividers are here in the district. I know that there's a question, though, about what the recommendation is for the use of desk dividers. So as we articulated in prior discussions, New York State specifically and its Department of Health guidance requires six feet of distancing or the use of physical barriers. New York State has yet to change that guidance despite changes in recommendations from the CDC, which is just speaking of six, there's, I'm sorry, three feet of social distancing. So even if that shift was to come down overnight and we were to receive that, there would be some real hard thinking that we'd need to do. And I believe that where we are as a school district, me as your superintendent, I've delivered assurances to parents, to children, and to our faculty and staff that we were going to provide this added layer of safety and security, and it's something that I would continue to commit to and recommend that the board continue to fund as we move forward. We've made those purchases. We've installed half of them in our elementary schools. The secondary schools are going to start their installation any day. So those expenses are really underway. So when we think about that push-ahead budget, there's some adjustments here that we're making. One in the area of professional development, and this would be an area, of course, we'd restore with additional state aid or other monies that would come in. But what I want to note, that Mary's been working closely with our administrative team, and in doing so, we're still able to fund the key initiatives that we have before us to move forward in the school year. You'll be reminded that in our curriculum and instruction presentation, we talked about a significant focus and investment in reading PD in the elementary schools that we're able to fund out of a grant. So we're funding that out of a grant. That's an additional $30,000 of professional learning there that really does offset some of this reduction. But we feel very comfortable with this. It's a commitment that we have that is really stays true to our beliefs about supporting our teachers' growth, but it also keeps that focus on ensuring that we have minimized disruption to the learning experience and the most important thing that we need, the balance of this school year and next year, is our students and teachers to be in the classrooms together. We're looking at decreasing some of our monies that we're putting aside for workers' comp that will rely more on our reserves for tail claims. In reviewing our technology expenditures, we are going to hold off on the purchases, some of the new line interactive boards, where that would be replacing smart boards. They're still operational. They're more expensive to operate. They're getting old. Some of them are failing. But we are going to hold off, and we believe we'll get through the school year without any problems. However, if we get the additional aid again, that would be something we'd contemplate restoring. We had a number of expenditures that we had outlined related to the PLTW STEM program and the needs of purchasing technology. So at the elementary level, our program is supported through software and device use, and it is iPads that is the primary function at the elementary levels. We do need to replace the iPads. That's not a concern. But where we found some flexibility is looking at the laptops that we utilize for the secondary component, and that is that middle school and high school component of PLTW, that there's laptops that we can actually, we believe we can stretch for another year's worth of use at this point in time. And then looking at summer facility projects, making a reduction of about $48,000. We're going to maintain the same level that we had of funding this year for those. And again, if there's additional funding, we'll look to restore them. So when we step back and look at these holistically, we're still delivering on the services that we need. Bless you. We're still able to support our district operationally as we need to. We're still going to have sound finances, and we're going to deliver the high-quality programs that we promised our community and that our children deserve. So this slide just simply highlights some of the adjustments that we're making from a technology perspective. When we think about those classroom displays before, when I talked about the new line boards, you can see a reduction of $40,000. So we are still purchasing many of the new displays, but we're cutting that spend in half. And then you can see we backed out the middle school PLTW laptops because we believe we can continue to utilize those that we have for one more year. So the summary of all of our new considerations, the items that still remain, and you can see, this is a short list this year, folks. In past years, this was multiple slides, but we're looking at one additional special education teacher to support that continued growth and the continuum of programs that's necessary to serve our students' needs, to be able to educate them appropriately in our school district and to ensure that they get the high-quality experience and the personalized learning that they need. Thinking about two additional teaching assistants to be able to support not only that program, which is an additional program that's been growing into sixth grade, but also to support the growth of our special class that is growing from ninth grade to 10th grade at the high school. An additional monitor for the PE program at Main Street School continues to be a priority. And if you recall back to the last meeting, this was something that I was committed to and that I told you that I saw it as necessary and that I asked that showed you that we would demonstrate how we would balance the budget because this is something that I see as essential. Additionally, we're looking at some additional data analysis software that we're really excited to introduce in the district. Not only is this going to provide important, necessary analytics of student learning and growth data that will help us better understand student needs and to be able to assess program curriculum needs, but it's going to create a much-needed dynamic warehouse for this data that will begin to be able to house all of our student data, historic data that we have in all data moving forward. And then the COVID testing that I referenced before, and here, this $26,000 speaks specifically to the services and not the purchase of tests. So when we look at our budget before the revenue side of things, before the modest increases, you can see the shift bringing it just shy of $66,000. The original push-ahead budget with those expenditures, where we're seeing those reductions of $233,000, and the revised expenditures, magically the numbers line up, and we're proud to say that we do have a balanced proposed budget for you this evening. So overall, when we're taking a look here, you can see the growth in our budget, working from a number of about $64.5 million within the 2021 school year, a push-ahead increase of $1.139 million. New considerations just shy of $300,000. New considerations just shy of $300,000 to arrive at our proposed budget of $65,994,429. So when we step back, and I just want to reiterate that we stay true to that vision that we have. We stay true to the commitment that we have and our responsibilities as a leadership team of this district. We're ensuring that we're meeting our strategic objectives. We maintain that commitment to making sure that students' learning experiences are going to be continually enhanced. We're continuing to expand that continuum of special education and related service programs for our students. We're meeting all of our students' needs, we remain committed to professional development, and we're expanding that important use of data to really guide our work and inform our work in the school district. We're continuing that commitment that we have to SEL, where the commitment that we have to diversity, equity, inclusion. And we're ensuring that our schools are going to be safe through that continued investment in the facilitation of surveillance testing. So a few slides that are going to be an overview of our budget as we see it presented tonight. Without a surprise, we should be looking at to see where did the monies fall? And education, as I always say, is a people's business. People deliver the work, people are the magic here. So it's by no mistake that you see 73% of the district's budget is focused in and around its investments in the human resources that deliver the education. The other quarter of the budget is those other areas that make it all happen. Looking at our investment in facilities, other contractual services that we have across the district, transportation, debt service, much like our own budgets at home and making mortgage payments and a car payment, managing the district's finances. When we think about this budget and what it looks like from year to year, you can see those variances that are before us. Be mindful that when we see some shifts that occur here, we understand that some of these variances were highlighted in prior presentations where we've made some shifts among the different codes within the budget. We're also seeing some declines in debt service, which we had anticipated, and some decrease in equipment and supplies, notably how we're spending monies in advance this year. But overall, we're seeing a percent variance in our budget of 2.2%, which is quite responsible. Of course, we're in line with the projected tax levy cap that is run through this formula that the state provides to identify what the allowable next net increase in our budget is. When we consider the revenues, this is that one area that I highlighted earlier, we know there's going to be continued question marks for some time. We're going to be looking to Albany over the next couple of weeks to get those final state aid numbers. And then we're going to be looking to see not only when the money is coming from Washington DC for the stimulus funds, but we're also going to be looking to see how it is managed by New York State to ensure that we get the maximal impact here on our school district. But notably, once again, we have to have a balanced budget. So when we look at our projected revenue, of course, it matches that projected increase in expenditure of 2.2%. So you can see the comparison of the two prior slides and the variances that do occur in the balanced budget that prevails. When we think of those budget trends, we always like to be students of our history. We always like to look at the data and see what the story tells us. We see some trends that are relatively consistent. We look back over the last three years, we see some responsible budgets. We're looking percent budget increases in the 2% range. We're looking at tax rate increases that have been and continue to be responsible with this year's estimated tax rate looking at a 3.53%. So we may say, geez, why, why is that going up a little bit this year? Well, the assessment roll has decreased in value. So when they roll those down in value, the numbers stay the same in the monies that are raised through the local tax levy. But that just gets distributed differently among all the different property owners in the community. So it's a formula that's led by the township of Greenberg, which drives that number. So that is the estimated increase at this point in time, based on the most recent valuation data that they have provided, Carol. So sitting at home, wondering how this may play out for you, you could do the simple math to see where your taxes will be impacted. To run this equation to see what the effects will be on your personal school taxes. We continue to have some discussions. The next meeting on the 13th will be to contemplate any feedback from the Board of Education and the consideration of any revisions that either go out of the discussion tonight or some that may be presented at that point in time. I would suspect that the most notable things that we're going to be wrangling with is going to be the effects of the additional revenues that we've talked about this evening. And then on April 20th, which trustees are reminded that it was a special meeting that we added, that will be a meeting where we will have the adoption of the budget. May 11th will be the annual budget hearing, followed by a regular Board of Education meeting. And then on May 18th is the all important annual meeting, budget vote and trustee election. We have a number of community discussions that of course will be coming up this year. They will, of course, all be virtual, but we look forward to engaging our community, answering questions and educating them about the great work of our school district, the strategic objectives and how they underpin all the work that we do. And to really answer questions about the finances and the overall district initiatives. That being said, Mr. Friedman, that's what I have this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Questions? No, I figured people will prepare their usual order at least tonight.
Would you like me to leave this slide back up?
Yeah, please, because people, they ask you to go to particular slides.
I actually don't have any questions, to be honest.
You don't have any questions, you can move on.
A lot of these, I'm fairly familiar with them. Yes, I will, but I do, I do have one question I do want to ask now, and it's because you just talked about it, which was the, because this year we're virtual with this vote again, can you just talk about like, I know everything will be virtual and most people can get on and do it all. I worry a little bit about the senior citizens being able to access it. What was the mechanism that we used last year to involve the senior citizen? Because you used to go to the senior citizen homes.
Senior Center, yeah, for Senior Center. So we would try to facilitate a public forum where it would be broadcast and the support for them to be able to access it. We recognize there'll still be some challenges there, but we'll work.
Joe will help us out, right?
I'm sorry.
We'll partner with Joe.
Yeah, oh, that's exactly, and say we'll partner with Joe Arcino and the staff of the Senior Center to try to make those connections where we can. We'll distribute obviously our budget newsletter, which we started our conversation about today. That will land in everybody's doors. The one thing that there's still some questions about is what the exact voting voting format will look like this year. We are told to anticipate that we're going to have in-person voting, but there is going to be that encouragement and availability for absentee ballots, as was in the past. So we're waiting for some more explicit guidance on that front. But we're anticipating that we're going to have in-person voting this year at Main Street School.
If I have any further questions, I'll come back to them at the end, but I'm good for the moment. Thank you.
No, it's not turned on.
Red and green and, oh, there it goes, it's magic, it's working. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about, it's very exciting to hear about the American Rescue Plan Funds. And I know that things aren't settled yet, but there's been some discussion of fact that 20% will be put aside for COVID gap education. And I just sort of was very excited to hear, I know that we've done collaboration and shared services, for example, on security work with other districts. So is the idea that this gap work, would this be the first time that our district with our local sister or brother districts have been able to do this?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if you want to speak to it, Mary, because I know there's been some conversation among the assistant superintendents for instruction. There's also dialogue that's been initiated at the BOSIS level as well.
There have been some exploratory conversations at Putnam Northern West just about how districts might be able to support students who are suffering some from loss and help them be ready for next year. It's very, very early in the planning stages because we're just now learning about possible funding. And as Dr. Harrison said, we still don't know what kind of restrictions will be on that funding. But thoughts of how to meet the needs of the students in the region is certainly a topic of discussion right now.
Yeah, it's a great creative opportunity. I just wanted to ask, just to clarify for people who are listening in. So last year and last year's budget process before the pandemic, the governor had done a few things where he was actually making districts compete for grant monies, particularly for mental health. But it seems like the American Rescue Plan monies, although you discussed a grant application that may be necessary, that's more for us to report out to the federal government on what we're doing, but not to compete against other districts.
That is our expectation as there's been, while some miscommunication came from our, unfortunately, that got people a little excited. Where we thought we were getting over twice as much money at one point in time. But when those numbers were corrected, we're told that there's particular funds that are earmarked for the school district and they are intended not to supplant that state funding. So it is not intended to be competitive. It is money that is available to us, but it's going to be, you know, some of the requirements, as I referenced before, and whatever that particular process is that's going to be outlined for us. But we are talking about a fair sum of money, you know, just shy of $525,000.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael? There we go, just to piggyback on Beth. You know, clearly this is unfolding, evolving to be understood. But you know, it's so much that has been the case with this pandemic. There are certain opportunities that are revealed that sometimes we want to be able to keep going into the future. It's not just for pandemic times. And this seems like perhaps one of those opportunities to try and have that lens on as you explore it. Because while we're calling it in this moment, learning loss, it seems to me it's an ever-present question of equity and supporting students. And I think hopefully the structures that you are able to consider maybe have that lens, well, that there's some immediate funding, but also an idea to how to continue that, that work. So that'd be interesting to explore and those are, I think we're similar in our questions around that. I just wanted to, I think there was some information at the last presentation, I just don't have it present, but around the cost of cleaning, what we're calling deep cleaning, that's been, this two-part question to begin with. The one, we've been kind of capturing that cost and that would be something that maybe if there's reimbursement for COVID costs, would that be a part of that? And two is, you know, we're looking at next year, I think we'd anticipated an increase. And and so if someone has that handy, whether you or Carol, you know, what, what that number was or is.
Michael, I will, I will add that we, we were able to apply for some FEMA money for last year, last Marches, February and Marches, cleaning expenses. I think we're submitting a claim for about $25,000 and all the overtime we had then. We then, it was closed and you couldn't do it after a certain period of time. But then we have to see what the rules are going to be for this grant. So if it, if it does allow us to recover some of that, we will. It's hard to, I don't have any of these specifics yet, so it's really early in the process, as Chris mentioned.
Yeah.
But we are certainly tracking, just, just so that you know, we're tracking all of our COVID expenses under a certain program code. So I can easily, you know, file for things as I'm allowed to do that.
Fantastic, yeah. I mean, I guess what's interesting too is we, we have a timeline with our budget, but we have this new information coming related to the funding. But my, my next question is just a little bit about the dividers and more about the clean costs is that, you know, when we were at this spot last year and at the beginning of this year, we were still trying to understand spread of COVID and we understand it better. And I just don't see experts or literature saying that the deep cleaning is as necessary as we were worried it was. I remember my ability to walk through a building without touching anything last year and it's less on the mind now. So if that's a significant cost next year, is there a way that we can think about anticipating that we'll scale that back? And maybe, you know, some of these other, I think about other things like, you know, we, last week you talked, or last meeting you talked about the ability to have wifi outside. And that seems like a more important solution when we think both about learning and about reducing risk than the deep cleaning to the extent we may be doing it.
I, I think the key here is, and I think as we've demonstrated over the last year, is flexibility. And that we're not going to spend money that we don't need to spend. We made an investment in the necessary sprayers for, for cleaning and we're continuing to use those. Carol and Gary have been very responsible in acquiring not only the equipment, but the supplies to be able to support that. So if we find ourselves in a position where we don't need to acquire certain materials, we're certainly going to look to invest in other areas. So whether that's wifi or something else, we'll identify those priority areas. And some of these cases, you know, if it's little nominal things, those are administrative decisions that were made. But if it's something of more significance, of course, we're going to bring that forward for conversation here with the board. When we, you know, some of the unknowns that, that, that are before us right now, you know, when we come back to the barriers. That's a commitment that I've made to our community, as I stated before, it's in alignment currently with the New York State guidelines. So we need to have them, but we don't know what the long-term durability is going to be of those. So if we're in a position where there's still a need or an expectation to use them next year, we may need to replace some of them or all of them. So that needs to be a consideration. So we're going to have to continue to be flexible, but those areas, and I think I mentioned last time that I have a tickler on my desk, right? And the wifi sits on that as one of those areas that if the funding frees up and there's that opportunity, we recognize that it's going to have far-reaching impacts on experiences in our schools to be able to support us today and into the future and thinking about how we're going to bring children outside. You know, if you drive by Dowslane now, our one school that's open for full attendance, you see the massive tents sitting on the blacktop area, right? So picture us two weeks from now, you're going to see those same tents and many more of them on our other school campuses. That's going to make us rethink how we teach and learn, right? We've made a significant investment in, in technology over the last two years. And what role is that technology going to be able to play in having that connectivity outdoors for our students and our teachers? So I, I think you raise some really important questions and, you know, we're going to have lots of dialogue in this room about what that looks and feels like. And our hope is we're going to have that flexibility. Our hope is that we're going to see increased monies from New York State, as well as the monies coming from the federal government that may actually present opportunity for the school district. An opportunity that's can allow us to invest in the quality of student education, to restore some of those reductions that we've made in the proposed budget this evening, but also to invest in our fiscal stability, right? So if there's monies that we're able to put in the bank and defer some of our own monies to be able to put in the bank in the reserves, that will be a responsible measure for us to take as well. So, you know, we, we really strive to be transparent in our communication with the community. And we have those important conversations in the boardroom. So I expect that we'll be having lots of that dialogue over the next couple of months and probably heading through the summer as well.
Yeah, perfect segue to my, my last question, though, just an aside, I mean, you know, just picking up on the comment of, you know, there's so many things that, you know, that, that we, we now cherish, you know, David was asking about these upcoming budget means, that's not something we cherish, but it's an opportunity. And I'm curious, you know, with, with how, maybe with the comms committee about how, you know, just like I saw the voting being phenomenal last year. Usually we don't have people turn out for these budget informational meetings, but maybe there are opportunities with the Zoom to approach it differently and get more participation. So that's interesting. But just, you know, as in those conversations you're talking about, I think there's, thinking about last meeting, this meeting, there was a lot, you know, in going, having children, students go back, pull into the classrooms, it's hard for us to wrap around our heads around, how is it different from hybrid? How is it different from what we knew before and how is it similar? So I think at some point we sort of have to, to look at that, that we're going back to school, it won't look the same. There are pieces that we hope to, to keep from what we've learned in this pandemic to, to actually benefit us going forward. So I look forward to that. But to your, your last comments around sort of the But to your last comments around sort of the fiscal stability and long-term costs. I really want to compliment you on your proposed budget, the hard work, clearly a lot of deep thinking in it. And, you know, for the last, I think, probably three years, we've been talking about. You know, after recovering from the last great recession and the impacts to programs and staff, we've built back. And now, you know, we have, I think, a strength in terms of the personnel and programs that is unprecedented for this district. And we should be really proud of that. But we've also talked about that fiscal stability and that there is not unlimited growth. And that when we look at these, sort of, we feel like they're baked in costs because we call them push ahead budget. But really, I mean, I think that's where the opportunity for this board and this administration going forward is. You know, I think you've justified the asks around personnel, you know, we're looking at that special education aides and teacher that. You know, that provides a benefit to our students here in district and it's sort of offset by other costs that we would have had otherwise. So that makes a lot of sense. But we want to, you know, we want to be careful that, you know, there's types of costs that. You know, are limited and there's kinds that stick around with the district and with taxpayers for decades. And I think we're at that point where we can start to look more carefully at that going into our budget cycle. So I'm glad we're at a place this year compared to where we thought might have been last year where we're not cutting programs, we're not cutting staff. We're actually in a very stable place with, you know, federal aid that can help us as well. But I just, you know. Thinking ahead, the opportunity going into the budget season is to look at and have conversations with the board with administration. About those push ahead costs. Because, you know, when people retire or people move on, there's breakages, there's new opportunities. And I know that some of that working is happening that you're doing and it's kind of under the surface. But I think it's time to start to surface that more for the board and the community. So that rather than continue to add to our personnel, we're looking for those opportunities.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And I think you highlighted a couple of things for which we should have pride, right? And where we've gone and the management of our finances over recent years. And the slide that I'm displaying right now, and I've given credit for this or credit is due multiple times. But Michael, you remember, I lifted this from an email that you sent Carol and me probably four years ago. And it really resonates and aligns with our strategic objectives and the thinking that we've shared in this district for years now. And I think what you just highlighted about our management of our finances rings true in this slide, right? It's talking about that investment, the commitment in what we're doing. So you think of our capital projects that are going on right now. You think about, you know, supporting our students' needs as you just highlighted. We're thinking about supporting our faculty and staff, but all those, those six bullets that fall regarding finances. Because of the work that we've done over the, I would say, the last nine years, right? And looking at the evolution of the needs and the focus around finance and program. We find ourselves in a position where, as this slide really says, that we're able to withstand challenges. And we did that. And other districts, and I never, you know, I don't like to point to the districts and make that comparison. I said it a few meetings back. I said it in a letter to the community, let's focus on Irvington. But not every district is as fortunate as us now. There are many districts that are cutting lots of programs because of the challenges they're facing. We're glad not to be there today. We've been conservative in our approach. We've continued to be focused in that effort and look where we are today. We have a balanced budget. We've sustained two years of unthinkable challenges. And we're going to come out the other side of this strong as we went into it.
Thank you, Maura.
Thank you. So at this time last year, as Mr. Hannah referenced, we were also talking about. When we were going here about the state aid. Decisions. So I guess it's a good time to ask the question of. Do we, do we have a sense at least roughly of where in the, in the boards? And the public's decision-making process on the budget, are we going to know about? Other state aid or federally decisions? So when do we know the real numbers?
Yeah, so I'm going to ask Carol to respond, but our expectation is we're going to know state aid numbers in the next two weeks. So this, we're going to have real numbers on state aid. If you recall, as you were a year ago, we were thinking about all these different measurement periods and these adjustments. And none of it ever came to a reality, right? And we built plans that were tiered, right, with different tiers of decisions that we would make. We made reductions early on that served us well, right? Because it helped us to get to where we are today, I think, and Carol will jump in. That the real question mark after, you know, the first week or so of April passes. Is going to be how the federal funds are going to affect us. So Carol, do you want to share any other thinking on that?
Sure. We don't, you know, Maura, we don't really know when we'll have that. Usually the governor does try to have, present a balanced budget by April 1st because that is the law. Some years they've been right on, some years a little bit late, some years even the day before. So we're hopeful that we'll have it next week over, you know, over break. And I obviously I'll be looking at the minute it comes out. The one thing I have heard some, some, I would say, degree of rumblings about is that. That local district adjustment fund, funding that was up to the state aid. I do, I do feel that feel fairly strong that that's going to, and that might result in approximately $205,000 that we could. That we could then use. So applied, but again, I don't really know all the details. There were still a lot of questions about what they were doing with STAR. There was so many unknowns there. So because revenue was really the hardest part of the budget to forecast accurately. And if you overestimate your revenues, that's a real travesty. So just like, you know, we can't, we can't underestimate costs for utilities and certain things that we just don't know what they're going to be. There's, we don't want to underestimate our revenues either. So if we do that. I mean, if we don't overestimate our revenue, sorry, that would be a problem because you can't spend what you don't have. So we're being conservative and we'll have to see what comes to play in next week, hopefully, or the end of next week. And go from there. So the next presentation will incorporate all that information and make any adjustments because of that information.
My other, my other question. I know that the expenditure changes or the adjustments to the push ahead budget from, I guess that would be a, well. Top line there for professional development. Would be, and I assume, I assume that it's at the top because it would be a priority to restore should the opportunity arise. And I wanted to say that I was happy that it was there. That was the most, I guess, impactful on. Our kids' experiences, direct experiences in school that we would want, we would want to restore. So that's, that's all I have.
Great. And just if I could, Brian, just say one thing to go back to what Michael said. About that idea of looking for the silver lining in our experiences through the pandemic, whether that was remote learning, hybrid learning, our transitions. Technology and how we collaborated. We've had evolved into different models of professional learning, right? And so I think one of the benefits that we're going to see that we're going to walk away from this experience with. Is really a different look at professional learning down the road and how we prioritize it and how we deliver it. And I think some of the takeaways are really going to have impacts on that front.
Thank you. Jane?
Yes, I have a comment. I think it's really exciting. And as I say, my next life, I want to come back as a student here. Very exciting stuff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Erin.
Is this working? Is it working?
Yeah, but I. I hear you.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
There it is.
I'm sorry. I guess a couple of things, I guess, I just wanted to comment on as we talked about last year with, or this year, how we're not cutting programs. Last year, we did cut the foreign language program at the elementary level. So I definitely think it's something, we're not talking about it this year, obviously, in light of the pandemic and everything else. We're trying to put added pressure on next year's budget, but something just to keep on the radar for the future years to reinstate that. And my other question, I guess, is for Carol. If you could just elaborate on what BOSIS, what services BOSIS provides for us and where the increase. What the increased services are for next year.
So that's a good question, Erin. You know, BOSIS is a shared service. So it's a model where the districts are working together to, to find a service that can be then. Managed by some in BOSIS who then can then bring it out to the other districts. And then presumably we're all saving money. I'll give a couple of examples. The, we use a lot of the services from the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center. Our finance manager software, our student information system software, all that is managed through the RIC. And so we pay the fee for that through BOSIS. But because it's a shared service, we're going to get aid on that as opposed to just going out and buying that with finance manager directly. That's an example. We do, so those are some of the bigger costs. We have, we run most of our professional development through BOSIS when we can. Again, if we run the consultant through them, we can get the aid. Presumably that same consultant might be offering that same service to another district. Customize it, but the overall plan is that. So we use shared services for that. There's a lot of other systems. We have my learning plan. We have, we have, there's just a bunch I could name. I could put together, you know, a whole list of them for you, Erin, but there's a ton of them. And the other beauty is that we do get aid on it. So I am always trying to maximize it. For example, this year you saw an increase in BOSIS costs where we put the NYU Metro Center Agreement there. That that's going to happen next year in the BOSIS because enough districts have used them now so they can create that program as a shared service. So when we can, we do it because we're trying to maximize our revenues, which again are always a year later. So whatever I spend, whatever we spend this year in BOSIS expenses, the revenue would come back the following year.
That was a great explanation. Thank you, Carol. Very helpful. And those are my only thoughts.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but just a comment as always, thank you, Dr. Harrison, Ms. Stein and everyone for tonight's presentation. I know the amount of work that goes into this and, you know, we're now, I guess, I'd say past the halfway point, at least in the process. And, you know, they'll still have some important variables that we need to work through as we learn more about where the state aid is going to come in. And also when we will get federal funds and what the amount may be and what limitations or conditions may be on that. So I think there'll be more to come, but appreciate the toughness that's gone on in the process and where we were previously and where we've got to today. So that's just my comment. I didn't know if anyone else had something to add based on the other rounds of questions. If there was anything, any further questions at this point?
I was just going to echo Jane that my two children who are graduating are very jealous about all the things happening in which they could come back again.
As a graduate, I wish I could go back now. So there you go. You know, certain, you know, certain, look, I mean, I, the price is a lot of me when, just when I graduated in 1992, we offered four AP classes. That was it. And look at, you know, the numbers we offer now and the breadth of the offerings. So I think that's a testament to the work that's gone in the district and the growth that's happened, you know, over the last. Now 20 plus years, but, you know, it's impressive. So.
Lot to be proud of, you're an.
So with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any questions on tonight's consent agenda? Their motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. So Dr. Harrison, over to you for your usual.
So tonight, we have the pleasure of appointing two new members to this amazing Irvington family. That we've been speaking of so proudly this evening with two new appointments. Teachers at Dow's Lane who will be beginning their work with us in the upcoming school year. And I'm thrilled to indicate that one of them is actually with us this evening remotely, of course, Genevieve. Genevieve Lotzi, Genevieve is going to be the new music teacher at Dow's Lane. And Genevieve, we're thrilled to welcome you to the Irvington family. She brings with her many years of expert service in the Bronx. And we've heard great things about her and she's impressed us every step of the way. So Genevieve, welcome to the family. We're thrilled to have you. Additionally, Dane Santacondro is another new Dow's Lane teacher that will be joining us. This coming year, Dane has many years of experience teaching in private schools in Westchester. And brings with him a wealth of experience that certainly is going to enrich our students' lives at Dow's Lane. So welcome. We're proud to have you joining our professional team. I would say that I would also, Brian, like to acknowledge a number of donations. One to Pam and Scott Mosenthal, Rena and Robert Speisman. And James and Mary McGary, who made donations to the Claudia Rodriguez Scholarship Fund. And then $7,420 worth of donations from many friends of Irvington and friends of Martha E. Dolan. Who is an accomplished Irvington High School graduate. Who have now just established this award in her honor that will benefit Irvington High School students for years to come. To, so to the very long list of donors, we are appreciative and thank you for honoring Martha's. Life and career and that commitment that you're making to supporting students of Irvington High School.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So again, I'd have the board welcome to our newest staff members. And now we have our second community comment period. So if there's anyone in the community that wishes to make a comment or question this time, now is the time. While we're waiting to see if there are any, I'll note that our next meeting is Tuesday, April 13th. At 7:30 and by Zoom as always. So seeing no questions or comments, everyone have a good break. And is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.